Thank you, Justin. I didn't realize I messed up that packet pretty bad this Friday.
Oh, no, it was fine. Nothing, nothing.
It was one of the days, apparently, I was anxious to get out of the hall and had the parts and pieces. I just didn't share them appropriately.
No worries. There's a lot to keep track of. A lot of moving pieces.
Just a few. Here she comes. You're not, you're muted.
Hi, everybody. Sorry for the delay. My computer is really slow. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second. You can do it the whole day. All right.
Roll call. Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Lightkin.
I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Keating.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes.
Okay. We have the first item on the agenda, the home rule. Dorothea, do you want to?
This is just the same, just renewing it because it's got the two new updated bill numbers because it's a new session.
Yeah, apparently we have to renew every year as it goes through the process. So I don't know, what is this, fifth, sixth, or ninth?
Yeah, it's been a while. But the good news is, though, I mean, and by the way, it's the same language. It's just, you know, they're just reintroducing it again. But I just received an email from Marjorie Burns's chief, chief of staff, and we're going to have a a Zoom meeting with Marjorie and also with Senator Brown to really see how we can hunch all this through. And they're also inviting, evidently, there's a new director at Nice Dot. And this is-
For our region?
I believe so. And so this is, I think, the first time that we're really kind of getting everybody in the room to really talk through this. Because the reason why this bill has been failing each year evidently is Nice Dot just crushes it and then the Assembly won't, won't bring it to a vote. So it always passes in the Senate evidently. That's my understanding. Is there any other thing I missed or? Yeah, it's kind of where it's at. So-
No, that's it. It's been passing the Assembly even with the old, I mean, passing in the Senate even with the old language. And it dies in the Assembly. So hopefully, one of these years, we're going to get it through.
I'm hoping it's this year. Right?
Should Jen Lunsford be included in that meeting, too?
She's not Village, though.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct, right? They didn't split Village.
No, they didn't. They didn't. So we have, we have Marjorie. Marjorie Burns. So, okay, I'll entertain a motion that we would adopt the home rule resolution for the 25 mile per hour village speed limit change.
I'll make a motion to adopt the home rule resolution for the 25 mile per hour village speed limit change.
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Keating.
I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Lightkin.
I.
Trustee Lampier.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
All right. Budget. Where do we want to start?
For the purposes of the recording, will you just say why we had to do that now as opposed to waiting to Thursday?
Oh, sure. Yeah, they're, they're really, in fact, there's a sense of urgency because they want to bring this bill to the floor and they have a window for when they can introduce it in Albany. Thank you for bringing that up, Dan. So this is really an administrative function for us to make sure that we have all, you know, our books in order or our resolution in order on our end so they can proceed with the introduction of the bill as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Where would the board like to go?
Okay.
Outside to dinner.
Any thoughts on anything?
Start with general sewer. I can share.
Were you able to send over the start dates of the staff?
I just sent, I resent it out. I apologize. I thought I attached all that when I sent it out.
That's in the spreadsheet.
I added it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah. Are we, yes, Lily.
Did, did anyone have any thoughts regarding the comparison of the 5% sewer rate as compared to the 10%? Because we may want to make a decision on that so that the treasurer can compile the final budget based on those figures.
I did send out today, thank you, Justin, the sheet showing the 5% in comparison to the 10%. It's not a huge impact. Either way, the biggest impact in the budget is when we move, as we discussed, since we're not going to get to the sewer lining this year, moving it to next year is what put our fund balance to negative. So we're kind of a little negative anyway because we're looking at continuing with the sewer lining. So it's, it's almost reflective of last year's budget when we did the same thing anticipating using fund balance.
And yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, hang on here. Okay. Yeah, does anybody have a thought either way about dropping it from 10% to 5? That's a good question, Lily. I mean, I, I don't really have a dog in the fight. I understand, Justin, why you brought it up. I mean, we, it has been, I think, just as a matter of routine, raising it by 10%. I'm not sure exactly where the justification was, or if we are receiving additional increases for servicing on our side that would reflect, be reflected in that increase. I don't know exactly. Do you have any thoughts on that in terms of, you know, just any increased costs of servicing the sewers?
Yeah, I'm sure with inflation right now, everything's going to cost more. So if, you know, I would, I would consider it anyway, just for the, the costs of living going up. It's not going to hurt to be better funded than that in the event of a situation. Other than that, I don't really, it doesn't really matter, I guess. 5%, it's 5%.
No, it's not a huge impact, but it is something that has been happening consistently every year. So yes, Justin.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion. I guess it doesn't seem like a huge amount, whether it's the five or 10. What seems important is, is how this reflects what we want to save for. And previously, we had the, the funds being diverted, of course, to four different reserve funds in the sewer fund. And we've, we've since taken away those diversions. So now we're, we're not diverting any money towards those funds. And so I think that's the real question is, you know, what, what are we trying to save for and what are the overall goals here? And in that light, I did put together, I worked on a couple of spreadsheets. I don't know if this would be an appropriate time to share those with the group and what the group thinks about that.
I think it's the time. Yeah.
Okay. If, if I may just share my screen for a moment, and I think, oops, it looks like I might need permission to do that. Would you be able to share that? Okay, let me try again. Okay. We've got a piano lesson going on in the background, too. I don't know if everybody can hear that. My 10-year-old is taking lessons virtually. Okay, can you see the Village Reserve Fund balances? Is, is there, are you able to see that spreadsheet? Okay. So what I did here, and I'll, I'll share these with the group.
I don't see it yet. Does anybody else?
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah, there's a here.
I've got a green circle around it on my screens, so.
I can see it, but it's very small.
Is it? Let me try dragging that to another screen and see if I can make it larger.
You can also make the people, our little windows, our little Brady Bunch windows, smaller and it'll, if you drag that little bar.
The easier way to do that is the slider within the spreadsheet.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can perhaps increase.
Yeah.
Is that better to?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay. All right, let's try this one then. So I went through the packet that Dorothea very helpfully scanned. And this is just an initial pass-through, which I did send off to Dorothea and to Jeff as well. And these are basically, I started from the, the balance sheet that we got, which I think was capturing the end of last year. And I looked at the balances of the different reserve funds. We've got five in total. You've got four of those under the sewer fund. So can you see me highlighting here, too?
I can, yeah.
Great. So these are the sewer fund ones, and here are the balances. And then, of course, there's the one under the general fund, which is the 164. And I went through, I just wanted to understand in the documentation, and that's, that's really fun reading, by the way. If anybody wants to look, you know, it goes back to the 1930s and there's a complaint about foul, about chickens and noise. And then they painted the, the fire department building for like $30. So it's, it's fun stuff to take a look at. But as, as far as the funds go, I, I thought that a couple of these were actually pretty clear in terms of the, the resolution that they were established under. So this one has got 32K. This is the easement under the Pittsburgh Pub that we maintain. So there are village pipes under there, and the building was built on top of it, basically. And so it seems to make sense to hold some of those funds there. The the repair RSV, which is the G232R, that's for the replacement of sewer lines in the Village of Pittsburgh. So that seems like a pretty important item as well. And I referenced the page in the packet, too, if you want to jump and follow along with me later on after the meeting. The, this balance is the biggest one, the 247K. And it's a little bit less clear in terms of the history, as I was reading through the packet, but it does seem that we've established a clear precedent that this is for a flush truck. You know, everywhere, it occurs multiple times, we're talking about this balance being for a flush truck. And the, the balance we've got in that fund lines up with that purpose because it seems like a flush truck costs about 300K SAC, based on what you're estimating. And we've got almost 250 in that account. So one thing that we might want to do is go back and refine the language that was used to establish that fund and make sure that it's able to be taken out for that purpose.
And I think that's what Jeff, Jeff was looking at. Exactly. I think everything you're saying is dovetailing with what Jeff was, was saying as well.
Okay. And it may or may not, you know, I guess it's, it's kind of my first look at this. So I'm sure there are things that are, that are off, too, but the, and then there's the Wood Creek Reserve, which of course is not within the municipality, but we've got a couple of pumps there and a generator as well. So there's an open question, I guess, about whether or not we'd be able to buy a new generator with that. But it should be able to go towards the replacement cost of the pump. So we got 50K in that one. And then down in the the general fund, we've got a repair reserve. And my question here is whether that is a, a capital account or a repair account. And I think that, you know, there's, honestly, it seems like we could probably use both in the village. And so whichever one it is, we, we might want to establish the counterpart for a different type of saving. But when I was looking through these, you know, basically, just to kind of synthesize the, the different funds that we have, it seems like these are all good things to save for. And whether or not we, we resolve the, the language and the exact purpose for which we can draw these things, it seems like we probably want more reserves, not less. And it seems like, you know, if, if this is a repair fund, maybe it'll, it'll cover roads, but we don't necessarily have, we might not have a repair fund, for example, for a lot of the DPW vehicles that are not related to the sewers. So there, there seems to be gaps in the areas that we're, that we're saving for.
Yeah, if I could just interject, too, I think what Jeff was expressing is that there is a way to, you know, when we do make, potentially repurpose some of these funds with the language, it's, we still may be able to do some of these things that are intended, but the language is in such a way that's, that it's a bit broader. So we're not so locked in to specific things. And, and for example, the most recent case of this was just the establishment of our, the most recent fund, which is for catastrophic, you know, big repairs anywhere in the village for sewer. You know, so I think that's all we're really looking at, Justin, is just kind of expanding a little bit on that language.
Yep.
So it's not, we're not so locked in.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. And one, another example of that might be in the, the case of the Wood Creek Reserve. It seems, again, pretty clear that it's for the Wood Creek Reserve. And it seems, it seems certain that it'll cover pumps. I'm not sure if it'll cover a new generator. So, you know, just broadening it up a little bit seems like it would, it would help us to utilize that fund.
Yeah, because you're right, the reserves are a great idea. It's important that we, you know, have a language that's broad enough so we can access in certain ways as needed. Yep.
So I just wanted to, and any questions about this? And maybe I can go to a different sheet and come back, recognize or any questions that people might have right now.
And so you're going to forward all of this to us?
Absolutely, yep.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. That's wonderful. Thanks for doing this.
And feel free to add notes or change things, whatever.
Justin, before you move on, real quick, I'm sorry. In your research, does it show how the funds could be, and I didn't get a chance to go through what you sent me,
That's fine.
how they could be taken back out? Did it show if it required a vote or if it had to be paid back? Or did it give any of that language or no?
You know, I, I think there was a page that I didn't focus as much on. I, I didn't, I looked more at the historical pages, the resolutions of when these things were established, basically by text searching for account names and numbers and all that sort of thing. It does seem that there are some general procedural pages that might be from the state comptroller or something that do refer to some of those procedures, but I didn't focus on that a whole lot.
Okay. Yep. No, that's one of the things we'll take a look at as well.
Yeah, whether or not it's by resolution, we can remove it or through referendum.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that, to, to be helpful here, I tried to reference exact page numbers. So if you look at the sequence in the packet, you can go back there and, and see if I'm on the right track or if I'm wrong in my reading of this. The, going over to another sheet then for a second, this is the, the spreadsheet started by trustee Kalusha. And Zach gave me a bunch of updates to this, which I applied. So first I did some formatting, so it'd be easier to manipulate. And then I applied all of the changes that Zach gave to me. And then I did some different calculations, just to, to bring it up to date a little bit more. So again, I'll, I'll share this. There are a few formulae in here that, you know, we can, we can tweak. But basically, this is just an inventory of all of the, the large equipment that's owned by the DPW. Some of it is general and some is related to the sewer fund. So to be specific, for example, the flush truck is, is used specifically for the purpose of the sewer. And we've got this slated based on DPW estimate for replacement in 2026. Replacement cost was updated to $300,000. We've got the auction value estimated for the, the sale of the current truck. And then we've got other funding that we can apply. So in this case, this balance corresponds with what we've got in the reserve right now. And then I also, you know, just put some other notes here about the, the fund that it comes from. So for all of these items, we've got a column that says years to replacement. And, you know, this is just auto-calculated from the, the year over here, whether or not we approved it. There's only one thing that we've, we've approved recently, which is the tool cat. And then based on the net replacement cost divided over the number of years to replace, we've got the amount that we would need to set aside in order to stay on the recommended schedule by the DPW. So that's my intent here. And, you know, of course, there, there could be some funding coming in from CHIPS. I added that in, in the one case where we've decided to do that. There could be other cases, too. But overall, I've tried to make this conservative to make sure that we could adhere to the schedule. So Zach, I'll, I'll send this over to you, too. And you can point out any inaccuracies or things that I messed up entering. But basically, what I was looking at here is that, you know, we've, there, there's quite a bit of red, if you glance at this thing. And, you know, these are just automatically applied colors based on the, the time window that we've got remaining. And we've got some zero years to replacement. We've got one year to replacement, 0101. And so a lot of stuff is kind of coming due that it seems like we've been pushing back for a while. And so you've got a lot of these amounts that are really creeping up. And when, when I added all that up, the reserve amount is, is very, very high. I'm sorry, I should probably zoom into this a little bit and you can see a little bit less, but the, so we're looking at total replacement costs, you know, of everything in the fleet of 870,000. But since so many things are coming due, we have to save about 650 to actually be on track with that this year. And so that's, that's quite a large amount. And I just, you know, that's kind of my, it's a big number. That's my takeaway from the sheet. But we can all take a look at this after, too. And any, any questions that people have based on what I'm showing you now?
Yeah, so it's very helpful to distribute these ahead of time. So we can look at them. The colors are a little deceptive because it's, it's assuming that we were going to save every month, money every year for these things, which we never did. So of course, we're behind on them.
Yep.
So it, that's really not meaningful. If, if we want to start doing it, that's a different conversation. But to look at where we are today for a practice that we did not have in place, it's apples to oranges. So if you want to talk about starting to save money now, sure, let's talk about that. But we're not behind on anything. Because we didn't have a practice in place.
Well, in, in terms of being behind or ahead or on schedule, um, we are behind in a lot of them because they have been up for replacement years prior to this. So it was just the recommended timeframe that we're supposed to keep the vehicles with best value versus when they start to degrade more and cost more money for maintenance and upkeep. Which also, the, that would be a lot of the red, too, is that it's at the point where it's still at best value for replacement or we overdo for replacement.
And then, of course, we would also look at, because the maintenance costs have been, are increasing, you know, significantly, as you've said. If we were, when we put, replaced with a newer vehicle, that column goes way down. Am I correct? Zach?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so there's some of it's being offset, you know. But I, I, you know, it's a good conversation to have, but I agree with Dan. This is sort of a snapshot of like, if, if we were to do this all now, you know, it's sort of.
That's what we need to go forward to replace everything that's in the red.
Yeah.
Right, to, to stay on schedule for holding to the recommended years to replacement based on the DPW assessment, essentially. Yeah, you know, my, my intent is not to judge the, the prior boards or, or anything. It's really just to kind of understand what savings goals could be. It seems like that was the initial aspiration of having this inventory. And I, I think that's a, a good one because, you know, we're just saying, well, do we save 5%? Do we save 10%? Well, you know, we can understand that with the flush truck in terms of the DPW flush truck replacement reserve fund. And that's the, the value right here. So, you know, I think gives us a window into, into those savings goals. So with that in mind, you know, if, if we believe that we could refine the wording on that fund, that's one place that I, I think could still use that kind of funding, since it does look like it's, you know, it's a bigger ticket item. Maybe four years or so to replacement, unless Zach has other estimates on that. And we still need a little bit more to, to save up for, as, as far as that item goes. Ultimately, I'd, I'd like to see this go beyond the, you know, this is the area where we might be the best organized in terms of the projects and large expenses that we have for the DPW. The other areas being things like the, the sidewalks and the sewers. And Zach, I know that you've got a sheet of the, the streets, I believe. And we could really use estimates on those to figure out, you know, what I, I think we've got to look at that capital fund in the general fund and see if that's for capital projects or repair projects. And see if, you know, that, that basically should be intended for vehicles or for streets or whatever. And then we should take that, those estimates of the repair schedule for the streets and use that to make an informed analysis of the, of the savings goals. So I, I think, you know, it's kind of a, a little bit of a step back with these, but I hope that it, it points in the direction forward to, to figure out what the right value for, for reserve funding is.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it'll be helpful, you know, when, when we all receive this, for us to really, each of us kind of go through it and see what's what. Yep. Yeah. But thanks for putting that together. That's great.
Yeah, thanks, Justin.
No problem. My pleasure.
The thing I'm going to want to understand better, Zach, is I understand the ideal time to replace things, but doesn't mean we will always do it at that time. So what does that mean for each of those items? And how much more life can we get out of them? And
Life?
The number we're trying to get to is how much money should we save on a yearly basis? And that's, yeah, it's some tricky math.
Yeah, it's, there's, there's really no formula that's clear for that. Best value versus hanging on to a piece of equipment for as long as possible, turning it back into earth, pretty much, you know, by the time you're done with it. You're not getting much in resale value, so you're starting from scratch versus keeping something for, you know, six, eight, 10 years, turning around and selling it and getting as much value for that to put back into the fund. So you're just spending less over time. That's, but I mean, you know, it, it's kind of a toss-up because maintenance becomes more and more expensive, the, the longer you hang on to something. What starts off as simple routine maintenance turns into, you know, bodywork, electrical work where everything starts to compound and what could be just a matter of an hour or two's worth of work turns into, you know, hours and hours and it's all done. You know, it's all priced out by the hour. If it's got to be sent out, a lot of this stuff we can't get into in-house. It's just, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's really a tough line to walk into predict and to price and to show the best method other than, you know, if, if a municipality already has a working model and they're able to follow it well enough to show that, you know, the costs start to become minimal the sooner you can get rid of them. And there are, I, I think it's FEMA that has prices put on each vehicle, what they're worth per hour. That you, you can kind of model something on, but it's, it's really pretty difficult to pinpoint, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, if any of that just made sense.
That's, yeah, just to, to follow on what was Zach was saying, I think personally, my, my goal here would be to have our equipment be predictable and reliable so that we don't have service disruptions when they're, they're not available due to malfunctions. You know, in, insofar as that's possible. We want them to, to be safe and, and not have issues that, you know, is going to, to harm our, our staff or village property of the municipality or the residents. And we want to be proactive rather than reactive. And I think as far as that last item goes, we've got the, the recent issue of the tool cat where we just approved the, the money after the, the floor pan had been welded in place with a replacement street sign. And great, great job on the, on the welding. But, you know, ideally, we don't want to be caught in this situation. We want to follow a schedule like this before we have to take measures like that, have vehicles out of operation, safety issues and, and that sort of thing.
Oh, Zach, just about the tool cat, what, what was the projected lifespan for the tool cat?
Well, I think that it should be turned over every three years. That's my personal opinion. Bobcat is not really known for longevity of the steel that they use in making them. Some last longer, some don't. We keep our in pretty good shape comparatively. But, yeah, I would, I would say this needs to be turned over every three years.
Yeah, because we've had it now for what, six?
Uh, yes, working on six.
Okay, so we're essentially, you know, well beyond that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but with this new tool cap, by the way, we are going to take some additional measures, you know, to have it undercoated and to work with the interior and do, you know, as best we can, at least to help, help a little bit with it to prevent rusting.
Absolutely. So, yeah, we, we, we will be doing some undercoating both outside and inside. And some of that's going to be done by Bobcat before it even reaches us. Um, but in, if the tool cat, as it is right now, at auction, would probably fetch somewhere between 22 and $24,000. But if we were, if it was three years old and we were turning it in with 1,500 hours, we could probably get $45,000. So it's a big difference just in those three years, how much it depreciates.
So it's the timing of really know, knowing when, when it's good for resale.
Yeah, so, again, you're not starting from scratch or, you know, $50,000 less than what the new piece of equipment is. It's just, it just minimizes that. It's not, you know, It's just, it just minimizes that. Um, it's not, you know, or the, the. Being able to, to drive around in new equipment all the time and, and having that, that kind of poshness. It's for, um, you know, for, for the value of, honestly, we get things at a discount, so we may as well take advantage of.
Great, okay. Yes, Lily.
Kindly different, um, question, and that is, I, I'm sorry, Dorothy, if it was on the papers and I didn't see it. Do we have an estimate of what the average, um, sewer rent, how much it would be reduced? In other words, the average person pay quarterly, right? And so how much would your bill, would you see that on your bill, uh, uh, on average?
I did not run those numbers on an average household. I just reduced overall the income by five percent, so.
Okay.
You know, overall.
If we just divided it by 1,200, was, how, how many households do we have? 600 in some households? If we just divided by 600, is this sort of a ballpark idea of what?
It's overall like close to $14,000 reduction in income, so.
So an, an average person might see as much as a hundred dollars in a, in a year, for instance.
I, I wouldn't say so. No, it's, the bigger users are gonna see more. You got the school. You, you got commercial that's going to use a lot more. The general person, they're only going to see a couple dollars, three, four. It's nothing, it's not, it, it's not a difference in a dinner out or, you know, not a dinner out. I think. Where the, who's going to see it more is your large commercial users.
Okay, I was curious about that. Thanks.
Yep.
Um, I don't have the number. I'm just curious offhand with the, um, the 10% number would be. Versus the 5%. I don't have.
As I said, it's about $14,000 difference in between the two.
Gotcha, thank you.
I mean, um, over, I'm not giving exact.
I, I understand. Um, so one thing that we are trying to do is, um, with the CIPP lining. Contract is extend that year after year, um, for just maintenance reasons because it is a hundred year old sewer system. Um, so. The more money that we have available for that, it will, uh. Be less burdensome on the overall, uh, sewer fund.
That could be a reserve that the board could look at setting up when we go to establishing the reserves. So if you wanted to keep like in past at the 10%, we could say the additional. Percentage we could set into contingency and when we get the numbers on the reserve straightened. We could set up that new fund towards the lining if that's something the board is interested in doing in that light. That's just quick off top of my head.
Um, what, what's the contract annually? Zach?
Um, well, the one that we're looking at for Sutherland is $140,000, but. It sounds like, um, after talking with both Mary and Dorothea, a sustainable amount of money, uh, to take out of that. On each year without putting too much burden on it would be somewhere around $30,000.
Okay.
Yeah, ultimately, you want to get where you're not always dipping into the fund balance. I wouldn't suggest doing that year after year. So. If you say every year, we're going to keep earmark 30,000 or 25,000. And then you can establish a reserve down the road, and then if you got a bigger project, you could take from that to do the bigger projects.
Well, and the challenge to that, further to that, Dorothy, is that. If we establish that, we have to fund it for quite a few years and not touch it during those few years to allow it to build. It's no sense in funding it and using it immediately to pay for the immediate ones. We're going to have to do both. We're going to have to establish a long-term plan and also be able to handle those short-term expenditures. So I think we should think of it in, in those two ways, and my guess is something like, um, you know, uh. $50,000 a year for 10 years. And, uh, not touch it, and that's going to be very hard to do.
Zach, just real quick on the lining, how long does the lining last in the pipe? So let's say we do Sutherland, when would we have to reline it?
Uh, I will probably be dead by that time. As far as I understand, it has about a 60 to 80 year lifespan.
So. I guess we're talking, once we do all the village, we won't need to do it again for 60, 70 years is the sense.
Depends on how long it takes us to get all the way around the village.
Correct.
No, but we're just, this is a what-if scenario, Zach. That's why we're just talking through. What it would mean to set aside a significant amount of money and then it have it be tied up after we, we potentially. Have, you know, relined or addressed our village streets. That's all, you know, this is just a what-if scenario. Yeah.
So, um, with this contract, it's not intended that each, um, the, the sewer is going to be lined from end to end. It is just to have that money available in case that is needed. So before we get to the point where we, um, we know what, how much lining has to be done. Um, we have to get a video inspection of it and then we can start to pick points that need to be done. So not saying that, you know, everything that we budgeted will be used, um. It will be just available in cases it's necessary to.
So again, it goes back to the language of how we would even set up that reserve because. For example, not all of Sutherland would, at this point, would need to be relined. We don't know that yet.
Correct.
Right, so when we talk about relining Sutherland, we're not just blanking, saying, yep, that's what we're doing. We have to go in with scan X, you know, they. Camera the system, you know, all of that, and then those decisions are made.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So again, it goes back to the language for, for any type of reserve for this. Yeah, Justin.
Yeah, I, I guess along the, the lines of this, so specifically for the relining of the sewers, um. My first question would be, um, how far away from the wording and the usage that we want is the fund G232R? Uh, so that was established in May for, on May 14th, 1991 for quote finance cost. And or replacement of the sewer lines with the Village of Pittsburgh. I think there's a typo there. I, I think maybe they meant, uh, repair and or replacement, um, but it, you know, we've got 87, $88,000 in that right now. And we're setting aside annually towards that fund, um, so potentially that's, uh, you know. My, my first question would be, is that what we want? And, and can we increase the funding to that, of that to, um, to achieve our goals?
Right, and that's where we go back to, um, you know, having Jeff review that language and making sure it's adequate. And also Dorothy raised a very good point of, uh, even with the money in there and then we amend the language. What is the language to be able to get that money out? Is it through a, a vote? Or is it through resolution by the board? We don't know because of how it was set up. So that's, you know, again, it just goes back to further investigation.
That might be a great line to repurpose to use as well for this project.
Exactly.
Sounds like it's already set up for it.
Almost.
Almost, I mean, right direction.
It's, it's dancing around it.
Yep.
But also in the event, like, we do have a broken pipe, um, I'm guessing that that would serve for that too. So if we had to dig up, you know, through someone's front yard to replace a section of pipe that can't be lined, um, that's what would be there for us.
Sure, except we're just not sure how you get it back.
But we're getting close. It all sounds good.
I think the clerk has to run around, talk to every resident, you know, make sure it's okay.
House to house.
House to house survey.
Okay.
So that leads, do we want to leave, we want to change the percentage to five from, to five from 10 or continue at the 10?
I mean, I don't know that it, it makes too much of a difference either way, um. I'm, you know, I'm fine with whatever the board wants. I'm fine with 10 and I'm fine with five. I mean, with 10, you get a little more over the transom, I guess, you know.
I'm inclined to leave it at 10.
Yeah.
I'm as well, um, particularly since it, you know, it's 20 bucks a person. It's 20 bucks a family.
Okay.
Um, so if, if we leave it at 10, um, it sounds like the intent is to, to save it for sewer type purposes. Um, does it, does it make sense, uh, if we're doing that to put them back into the. Um, the existing reserves as they were allocated, you know, the, the $5,000 to each fund? Or do we just put them in a general fund and then revisit once we're done assessing these funds and, and then make transfers, uh, a quarter of a year from now?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, abide by the way the board voted, uh, recently, and that was to not fund these until, you know, just as you said, we clear it up. Clear up the language, make sure, um, Dorothy, we can what, we've just put it in the general fund and we can put it out and redirect?
Um, for general and sewer, since you're already running technically negative into the fund balance. It's just going to reduce what we use out of fund balance, but we could earmark a certain amount to go into contingency and.
I guess I meant to say, you're right, continue.
No, that's fine. We could earmark a contingency account in the sewer fund and put, you know, 10, 15 or whatever the difference between. Or the whole 10% or the 5%, whatever the board tells me, we could shift into there. You'd be using more fund balance, which is. Kind of a negative impact. I'd almost leave it, let it reduce the amount we take out of fund balance and then look at the sewers as you get towards May. And make a decision then if you're look, running pot, you know, we're, we're going to have plus in the fund balance, then maybe that's the time. Go ahead and start establishing that reserve.
Because once again, you know, we're doing our budget well before the end of our fiscal year, so, yeah.
You, you very well will be adding to your fund balance in sewer, which is something that has continually happened because we haven't used it. So this year you might have a surplus that might be a time to say if we get the language straightened out. Let's take 20,000, then earmark it for sewer lining or pipes or hydrants. I'm just picking random items. Don't hold me to them.
I think that makes sense, just really as a practical matter, frankly. Any other thoughts from folks? 10% and we'll clear up the language and then redirect. We're good? Okay.
I'm changing that to 10%.
Okay, alrighty.
Is there any other questions or concerns regarding the sewer budget?
I'm good.
Okay, so general budget?
Dustin, thank you for putting that all together. That's very, very helpful and I'm so happy to see the Excel spreadsheet that Frank. Um, I know that, um, he had lots of hard copies of those and, um, I appreciate seeing that again as well. So thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
And if you can include me, when you send those out, I like to put it with the budget info for the year.
Yep, just did.
Oh, thank you.
Winging its way through cyberspace. Okay. Now on the general fund, any, any comments from folks on that?
The only discussion we haven't had with general and it relates to sewer and I want to. Make sure I'm phrasing myself correctly, the cost and that are associated to the sewer fund related to. Internet, computers, the other things we didn't touch that. Although generally their items like my computer, the general uses as well as the sewer uses. Did we want to split that out this year? I gave you a tentative numbers and the impacts on some of the lines. I didn't even go through every line. Because, you know, there's a lot, but just the general capture, is that something the board wants to implement this year or do you want to just not?
My, my general feeling, it's a really good question. My general feeling on that is we should start with the salaries of the people, which is a really good start for this fiscal year. And then have the accounting firm work with us on some of the fixed and variable costs that are not human related.
Okay.
And have them work with us to come to a recommendation as to how to play with that. I, I know what my gut says. My gut says keep it, keep it the same. So if you have IT costs. But coming up with a number would be very difficult because, uh, so I, I would like to, um. I would like to lean on the third-party accountants to help us with that.
Okay, when I talked to the accountants, you expressed to me, if you adopt a policy that reflects similar to what you do with the employees. That would make sense. And when I do, um, health insurance. When we did the health insurance, going back and making the corrections, I reflected the employees breakout the same as for salary. Just so it was consistent with what was adopted last year. So. I guess that leads us to the.
Yes, and there are some things that that's going to be really simple for. And health insurance is a really good example of that because you have, you know what you pay for Steve. You know what you pay for Zach and you can allocate that. Where it gets trickier are some of the shared resources. And that's, um, buildings and internet connections and phones and stuff like that. And that's what I want the help of the accounting firm with.
A general overall.
Yeah, they, they can help us establish proper, like, I know where you're go- like percentages guidelines.
That makes sense.
For how we would break that out.
Of the shared items.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that makes sense. Practical way to go.
Okay, then this leads me to the next question, Lily. I'm sorry, I didn't want to jump in ahead of you.
Oh, I didn't see your hand.
Can we, just, I'm pulling the board, do we feel that we can justify? Uh, that 20% of the work that we do in a year is sewer related? Does everyone feel comfortable with the amount of work that we do? Does that equal 20%? Is that sewer related or is it closer to 10% or 8%? Do you feel that 20% of your time as a trustee is spent on sewer related items? That should be the criteria, is it not, Dorothea?
Yes.
Why don't we talk about what that means? For example, we just have been discussing sewer repairs, sewer funds. You know, we just had a discussion, all of us, uh, what, I don't know what percentage of our time on sewer. Um, I mean, I'm comfortable with the percentage broken out for me because I'm always talking about it, but, um.
I'm, I'm not. Um, I think closer to 10 is more accurate. The time we talk about this the most is budgeting time. As a group.
I'm, I'm saying for me, I'm comfortable with the percentage broken out for me specifically in my role as mayor.
I do talk about the sewers a lot with the mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say, it, um, can, we can parse it out so that, I mean, I agree with Dan that we don't. Um, probably the, the rest of the board, we don't talk about it, um, that much, um, and work on it. As the mayor works on it a lot, so 20% is accurate for, for her and probably Dorothea and Zach. Um, so that's a good, um, that's a good point, Lily. We, and if we can parse it out, um. You know, take the four of us out of that. I don't know.
Drop you guys down to 10.
Okay, so I can change, make that change on the wage sheet. Is the other percentage proposals? Then everybody's okay with them, but I guess with the sewer breakup. Outside of the trustees.
Yeah, I know I am because they, you know, they, they work on this one and Zach, and Zach has verified that, so. I feel comfortable with those figures.
And they're tracking, you know, they track their hours, you know, all that's broken out, yeah. Uh, Justin, did you have your hand up or were you?
Yeah, it, it just seems like it's, um, you know, this is a question of, of survivability of our processes to an audit by the comptroller. Um, and that's kind of a, a Jeff, maybe, maybe Jeff and or our accountants could weigh in on that too. And I wonder if there's been a case where the comptroller has said, um, you know, has gone to a municipality and, and said, um. You know, show us your proof that you're doing 10% of work for this particular budgeted purpose.
Dorothy can speak to that. Yeah, we, we have information about that, yeah.
Actually, the controllers like this kind of language because it's defined, it's definitive. We're actually breaking it and with sewer, we're charging actually the hours that they spend with office staff and other people. That's a little harder to put because we don't punch in and out on a clock saying we're working this hour for sewer. It's more generalized, so it's giving a definitive line. What they didn't like was when the board set up a due-to, due-from. And they were setting, let's say, we're going to say, uh, 34,000 or they had a percentage calculation that they were doing and they were just transferring that over to covering. Incidental costs, they didn't like that. That we had no accountability to it, no set percentage and follow. So we started this back when they, after they came, so they were okay with it. And I can say it's been in place by many municipalities as a shared way of capturing the employees that use, do the work in there. Like with just being village clerk, I wasn't spending as much time on sewer, but now moving with both type, kind of both titles. I am spending a lot more time with the sewer and looking at things, so there's a cost to that, so we want to reflect that appropriately. So I don't, no, I don't see a problem with that.
And again, you know, even, um, in discussions at NICOM, um, they do like to see it because that sewer essentially should be its own sort of. Self-sustaining department, you know, whatever we use for labor, whatever we use for services, the building lights. It should be able to function on its own in terms of sort of a P and L center. That was my takeaway and the accountants also, uh, weighed in on that, I took, I believe too, didn't they? Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're happy with the breakout. They, that's fine. It's clear, it's definitive. The board made. Yeah, they're, they're happy with the breakout. That's fine. It's clear. It's definitive. The board made that decision. I think actually the board made the decision a couple of years ago to make that breakout and accept the percentages.
Yeah.
Sorry, the, um, the, the breakout for our board, I was wondering if maybe something like taking a sample of the, as our work is primarily directed by the agenda, the meetings, you know, if we take 10 agendas is one of those in every case, something does, does have something about a sewer. You know, just kind of do a rough breakout to be able to substantiate whatever number we decide on.
Yes, and it's not that easy because we do talk about it a lot at this time of year. So like i- if you were looking at a budget meeting, it's, it's quite a bit of our time. So, and it's going to fluctuate based on what's going on. So you, you got to come up with a ballpark number.
Yeah, but, but again, I think, you know, going back down, what you were saying earlier, you know, working with the accountant and just saying, is 10% realistic and would it withstand an audit? Is it something that would, you know, we also can look at what other villages are doing relative to their percentages? Just as, not even to copy it, but just to, to see how they came about that. So. I mean, if you guys are fine with the 90, 10, you know, I think that's.
I don't.
I'm more comfortable with the 10.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think that's overreaching at all.
Yeah, I mean, that's my sense of it for sure.
Uh, it would set off a red flag if it was a very big number because it, it would be a way for us to move money around. With a small number, 10%, 5%, whatever.
Yeah.
It's, it's fine.
Yeah.
And Justin, to your point, it's probably not justifiable. Who knows?
May not be justifiable for any other village. You know, they may say, well, we came up with 10 or, you know, pretty much the probably the discussions we're having. But, you know, again, I think it's within the, the realm of being realistic.
Correct. I know when I was with Webster, it was a 50, 50 split for the board between water and sewer. I mean, water in general, but I wouldn't justify that for this board. I don't think that's an accurate reflection. So.
And we're, we're also, let's also remember that we're talking about $24,000 and we're talking about 10% of that. So our salaries for the four of us is call it $24,000.
It's minor.
Yeah, so it's really.
It is, but it's better to be, it is, and it's better to be more reflective of the work we do, even if it's a small amount.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think the notion of fairness to the Wood Creek residents too, as, as people who are not members of our municipality who are paying some of these bills, I, I think that even though it's a small amount, we need to be able to justify it to them that these, that these costs are really realistic.
I wouldn't want to use a lot of office staff time to, to do that. The, the, the juice for the squeeze is not.
I'm not so sure we've ever had any kind of inquiries in that manner. I mean, I think things have been pretty smooth with Wood Creek and you know, we provide the service.
It's management of the service.
Yeah. So, okay.
So I'll make that change in the salaries. To five, 10% for the board, the rest of the numbers, the board was good with the breakout. Correct? Okay.
Zach, you reviewed those? Um, the breakouts.
That was the 85, 15 for the guys, 60, 40 for you. That was, it was on the, yes.
Yeah, that's good enough.
I think, I think the crew's timesheets are going to be more reflective of what, correct? I mean, just a, a going, you know, offhand, I would say that's probably pretty close. Some years maybe more, some years maybe less, but yeah, that's, I'm good with that. I am good with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. What else?
We need to make a motion to temporarily pass this budget so we can get to public hearing, not pass this budget, you know what I mean? To put it to public hearing, even though it's not done yet. Do we need to do something like that today?
You need to, so I can publicize for the public hearing for April 14th. We want to adopt this as the tentative budget. That doesn't mean it isn't changeable in any shape or form. It's just the tentative budget. You have to have something to put up for the, for the public to review. So as I said, this is always changeable.
Yeah, and, and you know, so we can keep working on it, you know, going forward. It's just, we have to, it's like a snapshot. This is where we are now. And we're pretty close on some things. There's probably a little bit more tweaking, but we're pretty close on things. And so.
There's three things I know I still want to review as, as a team, and that is the salaries of the staff, the cost of living increase of the staff. There was a third thing, shoot. Anyhow, it'll come back to me.
You'll think of it, yeah.
Oh, oh, the, um, the outliers, the biggest increases and the biggest decreases and just review those things. And we could do that at the next meeting. Now, now that we've got the dates in that spreadsheet, I can get the information that I need in terms of cost of living and salary and that kind of thing. So those are the three things I'm going to want to cover at the next meeting. So I mean, I'll vote for this, but knowing that we may change it. And remind us, what is the tax increase currently?
Zero.
Yeah, okay.
So anything you change, I would shift and put into, well, you, if you don't spend, it just goes into contingency.
Yeah.
Okay. Unless you have another project you want to gear towards using the funds towards.
Okay, and we can talk about that at the next meeting too. Am I correct? Potentially. Okay. Oh, yeah, Lily.
As, as we're thinking, I wonder if the board might want to think about a small, this is just philosophically, a small incremental change each year, just like we, you know, in anticipation, rather than find us ourselves in a situation where we, we don't plan for the future and we don't raise taxes. Let's call it a half of a percent, a 1% just to in anticipation so that after a five-year period, we don't end up with a, in a situation like we have in the past where suddenly now we've got to jump up and, and the only way we can make it balances with a 5% increase. I'm just wondering, it's a philosophical question and that the board might want to think about and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
No, I think you raised a good point because I, I, I know that sort of caught up over the years. Yeah. No, thanks for that, Lily. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, my, my own personal thought about the, the topic that trustee Lanfear was just mentioning is that, that, that is a really important topic for us to discuss, to discuss. And, and this is not meant to disparage anybody's work on the budget to this point, which I very much appreciate. But I think that the, uh, the way that we understand the budget should start with the kind of reserve funding discussions that we're having now. We need those reserve fund discussions for things like the sewers, for things like the streets. And it's, it's going to be very difficult to have a budget that we're comfortable with that has that sort of a multi-year trajectory if we don't really have an understanding of those fund balances. So that's, that's my concern with the, the budget at this point. And I, uh, it's, it's my own personal concern when I look at these numbers.
No, and I appreciate that. I think we're all concerned about that. And I, and you know, as we all know, at this point that, you know, these reserves have been sort of hanging out there for a really, really long time. So again, um, you know, the board, I buy by, you know, what we all voted on. This is a budget. We can move forward. And then I think as we, we sort through these funds and repurpose, then we obvi- obviously can always amend our budget. We can repurpose those funds. Absolutely. I think everybody nod. If we're all on the same page with that, that's where we want to go. We want to make sure that we can access these reserves. So I'm not sure that it necessarily holds up this budget right now. But boy, you, you're so right. We need to sort it out and then, then we can really plan accordingly and trend into the future and how we want to do this. Yeah, for sure. So I would entertain a motion to approve the tentative budget and set a date for the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Lanfear's second, but April.
Yeah.
It's April 14th.
April 14th.
April 14th?
Hold on, go into a calendar.
Okay, yeah, let's double check.
It's April 14th.
Okay. April 15th would be an omen, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, was there a second?
Lanfear's second.
Okay. Oh, okay, back for a discussion before we vote then? Yes, Justin?
Yeah, if, if I may just briefly, I, I wanted to reiterate that I'm, I'm happy to continue helping out with, with things as I've done with the, the inventory spreadsheet. And I, I hope that, um, I, I know that we're looking forward to, um, uh, cost summaries of, of streets and sewers. So I'd be glad to participate in that and I, I hope that we can do that in the first quarter of the next fiscal year and continue that out through the years. We've got some of those multi-year plans in place for the, the following budget.
That's the goal and that's the goal of what I've been talking about as well. I think, again, we're on the same page about really capturing what we have in infrastructure and where, what has been done, what we can do short-term, medium-term and long-term. Absolutely. That's where the whole, Zach, you and I, we've beaten this thing to death about infrastructure. So all good stuff. I couldn't agree with you more. And I think this board, board agrees with you. So, okay, uh, roll call please.
Okay, trustee Lickett?
No.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Thank you. I'll get that advertised. Um, I do want to say to the board, you know, this first run I've done with the budget, I am looking at, after this is done, start projecting out the next three years budget as recommended by NICOM and the comptrollers and having that pre-planned. So budget shouldn't be super painful when you go in. You should have the projected cost for equipment and everything in there. And I think that's something we need to start right away after we adopt this budget or whatever budget the board does agree on. We need to start the process for the next budget and start getting those numbers in.
There we go.
We've got to stay ahead of the game.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Renee, yeah.
So just to clarify, we continue to work. If I, I mean, based, I know last year was a crazy year because of, actually, my last two budget cycles were a little, little dodgy, but, um, so we continue to work. We can tweak things, we can amend it. We just need to put, we, we need to provide a, a budget when we post the hearing.
Sure.
And so we continue to work and then after the hearing, when is the final date? Do we adopt it that night? Or is there an opportunity? I thought there was something about May, May 1st or something. I can't remember the dates.
Yep, you have to have an adopted budget by May 1st so I can start the tax process.
Okay.
Um, typically the board has had their public hearing, the first meeting in April and adopted in the second meeting of April. If, let's say, everything's blue skies that day, you love this budget and I think it's awesome really personally. You go ahead and adopt it. You can, and you're happy with it. You can adopt it the night of the public hearing. But if you're hearing feedback and you want to, oh, maybe we should look at the numbers again, you can go back, look at the numbers and then adopt it again on April, in the last meeting of April.
Yeah, so it varies with municipalities, you know, for example, the town, you know, had the public hearing and then just adopted the budget, you know? In other words, every municipality is different. I've been in one, you know, many municipalities where they just have the public hearing and then they go right to vote. I mean, it just depends. So Dorothea is correct. It just depends on its feedback.
Really how the board's feeling. If they're happy with the budget, you got no critique, everybody, no complaints, everything's good, you can call it done. But that's really all up to the board.
Yeah.
Then, I have two, two items that, um, that are, that I just wanted a little clarification on. We were going to check on the attorney, all of our attorney lines, and I don't know if we, we feel pretty solid about all of those attorney fee lines in our budget. I can't remember where we ended up with that one. And then the other one was the, the arboretum, we've got $4,000 in there, um, I believe. I'm not looking at the line, but if I, I read it correctly this morning and just being, you, you know, getting some clarification about what that would be used for, because I know we've got a lot of planning ahead. And we talked about getting a grant for that as well. So I don't know. At one of the, the next meetings, I would like to just go over, over that. So the expectations are clear about what we plan to, to do with that.
Yeah, because and, and actually on, on the meeting then on Thursday, Scott Harder is going to be in that meeting because he's putting, put together a bit, you know, to do the survey actually of the DPW and Preserve. So, um, you know, this is part of.
Get some more clarity. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's part of steps. And I know he's, he's looking forward to discussing that with the board.
I know we, there are a lot of still open-ended questions there. So it's hard to, hard to budget around it right now. I get it.
Yes, Renee or Dorothea?
The only concern I have on the attorney fees deals with Mindy Zogland. She didn't budget anything towards 75 Monroe. The other numbers are pretty solid. That's the only one that was kind of open. We do have a healthy contingency in this budget as well. So we do have the capability of shifting. And obviously the salary discussions aren't over. So there's, there is room to shift if needed.
Yeah, and to, to Renee's point, I also want to look at, we, we should look at all of them. I think you're right, Dorothea. But I do think we should look at all of them. We also should take a better look at Hodgson Russ because I, I think we had 30,000 in there and they haven't used even a fraction of that.
No, and they came back 10,000 for a couple of years.
So, so there, there's definitely some things to do there. I, I now have a pretty long list of things that we still have to do. And I've captured it from what I've said and from what you all have said, and I'll send it around so we can think about those things as we go into our next meeting. We might not be able to get them all done at our next budget meeting, but they're all there.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Tim.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, Justin, yeah.
Sure. I, I just wanted to ask for clarification. The next meeting, we're going to be in person, are we? And is that open to the public? Maybe we could just reiterate that before we close.
Budget meetings are open to the public, just like any other meeting. The only thing we, yeah, they're always open. The only thing we don't do is give out the worksheets and all that because they're work papers and they're very tentative at best.
And I, I was actually just asking the, the next regular board meeting. So Thursday, we're going to be in person at Village Hall and, and Village Hall is also open to members of the public. Is that the?
Yeah.
Great. Just wanted to make sure all.
And that is a high, is that the hybrid model? So people who aren't comfortable coming, they can.
I am going to be doing the hybrid model. I have had some feedback from certain residents that they're not thrilled with the hybrid. There's concerns with the sound quality and that might be an area we need to look at at some point. You know, we did have people come in. We kind of set up something we thought was working pretty good. We need to look at it eventually if we want to continue on that, having those video meetings for the public to view at home. It's been popular. It was popular when we were in person. I've just apparently there is sound and visual issues, not being able to see everybody as clear as you do, like.
The bottom line is we're going to hold our meeting in public. The Village Hall's open to, has been.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have both. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless.
Real quick, I'm sorry, Dorothea. Mayor Plummer, real quick, any further instructions for the board for me to change anything with the budgets?
Not at this point.
Not, not right now. I think we've got our list.
I just want to make sure I don't miss something. If you have anything that you need to throw at me, throw it at me before the next meeting. I look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dorothea. And thanks, Brooklyn, for your good work on this. Moving it forward.
Yeah, thanks, Brooklyn. I didn't mention that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lickett?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good work.
Good night.
Thanks, Zach. Thanks, Brooklyn.
You're welcome.